Sending him to die on the cross for our sins. We are grateful for the gift of salvation that is offered to each and every one of us. And Lord, as we come to this Christmas season and we think of your great gift, we want to, we just want to say thank you for what you've done for us. Lord, would you give the men and women that are here tonight great wisdom and discernment and a keen mind as they think through issues that affect so many of us? There are many people seated and standing behind me who have very real issues and very real concerns. And I pray, Lord Jesus, that you would give a settledness to everyone in the room tonight, that we would know that you're in control and that the decisions are going to be made that are best for us. Now, we thank you for the peace that you give. In Jesus's name, amen.
Please remain standing as we honor our nation's flag.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have the roll call, please?
Commissioners Cave Ellihue.
Here.
Randy Hall.
Here.
Cassandra Harvey.
Present.
Raj Molly. Fabian Tarsiano.
Here.
Vice Chairman Dan Jacobs is absent. Chairman James Vos.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Public business from the floor. If an individual is unable to stay for the entire meeting due to extenuating circumstances, a total of 10 minutes is offered at this time, during which input may be given regarding agenda items. Individual speakers would be limited to two minutes each. Do we have any early speakers, Mr. Ludeke?
None that have requested, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Any person who would like to address the planning commission on any agendized item is requested to complete a speaker's card for the recording secretary identifying the agenda item you'd like to discuss. Each person will be given an opportunity to address the planning commission at the time such item is discussed by the planning commission. Speaker cards are available at the rear of the chamber and on your right, our left, adjacent to Mr. Adams. Individual speakers will then be limited to three minutes each. First item on our agenda is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of October 17th, 2011. May I have a motion, please?
I move that we approve the minutes from, excuse me, October 17th, 2011.
Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? Please vote. Yours didn't go.
Yeah, timed out.
Well, I guess we'll do it again.
Here we go. Take it that time.
Motion passes five zero.
The next item is a continued public hearing. This is a public hearing on conditional use permit 11-10. The applicant is here this evening, and I will read into the record. The planning commission will be conducting a hearing tonight on this proposed project called conditional use permit 11-10, that over time has become somewhat controversial in nature. The commission intends to conduct these hearings with respect property quorum pursuant to government code 54957.9. These hearings are not intended to be an entertainment venue. Proper order will be maintained. We understand that many speakers may be offering testimony tonight, so please give them the respect every citizen deserves throughout the hearing process. When called upon to speak, please address your testimony through the chair to the members of the commission. We thank you in advance for your courtesy and cooperation this evening. Conditional use permit number 11-10. A continued public hearing is open without objection. May we have a staff report, please, Mr. Ludeke?
Yes. Chairman Vos and members of the commission. As you'll recall, at your previous meeting on October 17th, as a result of a great deal of testimony that was provided in regards to this proposed application, the commission requested that the applicant and the members of New Life Community Church attempt to meet and see if they could come to some resolution of differences in regards to this application. And in order to allow that opportunity, the commission did in fact continue the matter over for one month. We did have a staff member, Sylvia Donovan, our principal planner, present at a couple of meetings that involved both Pastor Marsh of the church and the applicant, Mr. Huffaker. The first of these occurred on October 31st. The second of these occurred on November 14th. As the result of those meetings, in addition to a number of personal items and areas of concern between the applicant and the pastor, and between, I would say, the proposed operation and the existing church, there is a framework, as we understand it from staff's perspective, of an agreement to allow the approval of this use, subject to a number of different conditions. And the conditions that have been recommended are in large part to alleviate potential concerns that were raised by members of the church and were reiterated as, from the pastor's perspective, as being very important from their standpoint. We have provided those to you in proposed resolution number 1118. Essentially, it deals with issues such as days that are allowed for uses in the proposed industry theater. It has issue, it deals with the amount of time in which alcohol can be available for sale or service. It has provisions in there regarding security. It has security tied to the size of the event. It has requirements in terms of the applicant's responsibilities with respect to where the crowd queues in order to enter the facility and the type of security that's necessary outside of the actual walls of the facility out in the parking area. We believe, based upon these meetings, as I said, that these conditions adequately represent what would be an agreeable framework for the approval of the use, and that it adequately addresses the church's concerns and still allows a reasonable operation of the proposed use. We have also indicated to you a couple of things in here that we think from a staff perspective are important. The first and the most important of those, I would say, is that we are recommending that if the commission approved this use with an alcohol component to it, that there be a review within six months of the commencement of the operation, so that we can actually go back and take a look at what has happened and how the use is being conducted. We also have indicated to you that there are additional types of venues or events that the applicant has requested, other than concerts. These include rentals for such things as quinceañeras and private parties, and there are a specific listing of conditions relative to that also. And I would tell you that the basis for those conditions are largely drawn from a similar type venue that was approved by the commission on Lancaster Boulevard several months ago. So you are looking at the latest that we've got essentially in terms of, in terms of dealing, as we feel, with adequately controlling that type of an event or venue. I would be happy, from the staff standpoint, to answer any questions you may have on specific conditions. These have been provided to both the applicant and to the representatives of the church. You will undoubtedly hear from each of them this evening, assuming they are in attendance. And as I said, with these conditions as recommended, staff feels comfortable in recommending to you the approval. Of course, it is your responsibility as a commission to take any additional testimony and ultimately weigh the evidence and come to a conclusion.
Thank you, Mr. Ludeke. Does anyone, any member have questions of Mr. Ludeke?
I do.
Go ahead.
I also wanted to tell the audience and the commission members that I, at the invitation of the applicant, that I visited the venue. Mr. Ludeke, my question has to do with the six-month review. Will that have to, a public meeting associated with it, or will that just be staff?
I would say, in this particular case, that I would at least want it placed, I'm speaking from my perspective, I would recommend that it is placed on the agenda of the planning commission. Therefore, you know, if anybody does want to give testimony on that, we can make them aware of that. And I think it would be an appropriate situation to cover, at least in that arena, for the first review, given the fact that there's been quite a bit of concern expressed up to this point regarding potential effects.
Will the applicant have to pay any more cost for the review, or will his original fee pay?
No, it wouldn't be something that we would charge an additional fee for the review. We would simply do it as a matter of course, from a staff perspective.
And the negative outcome could be that he could have a CUP modified?
Well, I would say that in the event that the review of the CUP, the commission feels, warrants some kind of change to conditions or a reconsideration of the approval, I don't think we would do it in that review venue. We would, we would need to reset it, I think, for a formal public hearing, and obviously give the applicant and any of the interested public an ample opportunity to be prepared for that kind of a hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take public testimony now from the applicant. Mr. Huffaker?
Good evening, welcome.
Thanks for having me. So on October 31st, we-
Hang on a second. Let's see if we can move the microphone up a little higher so we can hear you, or maybe you can speak up.
Okay.
I know you're soft spoken, but it's okay to speak up.
Okay, thank you. On October 31st, we met with the church, and we discussed a couple of their concerns, and they were actually very, very interested in working out with us and making an agreement. And we discussed a couple issues, including parking and outdoor security and days of operation and hours of operation. And we came to an agreement of sorts that we would offer up these things, for instance, sectioning off their parking, so if they do show up on a day that they're not generally there, they'll have parking spots. Another thing we offered is we'll have a person in the lot, in the parking lot, to be in attendance, to make sure there's no confusion with the parking. We discussed hours of operation, so we can't open on weekends until seven, and we can't open on weekdays until five, and that's just in the interest of ensuring that we do not conflict with their hours of operation. So we were, we made those changes. We discussed private parties and private events, which would be birthday parties or quinceañeras, and we came to an agreement on that, which was also different hours of operations. But in all, we discussed how we can operate, and we can still be successful, and they can operate, and they can be unaffected by our operations, and we came to an agreement that we all seem happy with. So I feel that we did our best to work it out, and we came to a good compromise, so.
All right, can I conclude your remarks?
I think so.
All right. You have ample opportunity to address the commission, and you will have, as was in the previous hearing, an opportunity to rebut. There may be questions for you, however. Does anyone have it? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you have any other representatives on your behalf that wish to speak tonight?
I guess I have two.
Other than those in favor?
Yeah.
Or opposed? All right. Good evening. And your name, sir?
Brian Torresney. Good evening, Chairman.
Good evening.
So, the last hearing, we were told about the importance of communication, and in today's world, we have instant information and constant access to anything we want. On my phone, I can put one message in, and in the click of a button, over a thousand people can see that message. Now, while those are great, and we've come a long way since Pony Express, nothing works better than arranging sort of face-to-face meetings. And we were able to do those. We had two opportunities to do those with the church. So, but on the two separate occasions, like we've said, both with city supervision, and they proved to be beneficial for both parties, we empathize with the NLCC. We have the same concerns that they do. So, safety was a concern. We've said that we want security guards at shows. We've matched the amount of security with the different amount of attendance that we have at those said shows. We have security cameras, we have four different security cameras that are being ready to install. We have constant focused supervision in a closed area. So the proposed area where we would be doing any sort of consumption of alcohol for over 21 in that lounge area is going to be constantly focused on making sure everything in there is running as planned. Parking was also expressed, and as Tully had mentioned, we had agreed to section out different sections of parking, so that way, industry theater doesn't have to interfere with anything, any sort of events that conflict with New Life Community. And that's, again, under the circumstance where we haven't already resolved scheduling issues ahead of time. We've arranged with New Life Community Church to meet monthly, to discuss different operations that are going on during the said months in the future, so that way, we can coordinate our events in a little bit better, that we don't have to have those conflicts. So, we're prepared to make those moves if we need to, but we're hoping to not have to schedule events in the same nights that they do, to avoid those altogether. They're also concerned with like the youth of the community, and we have that same, we have that same concern as well. Industry theater, in conjunction with Boxcar Productions, which is the in-house booking and promoting agency that runs within industry theater, has started Boxcar Kids, which is going to be, it's a youth organization, where kids are going to be able to have fundraising opportunities for locals. I work in a grocery store. Chairman, you've actually came through my line in that grocery store. And every month, you've seen it, we'll ask you, you'll get you done with your turkey, you'll buy all your stuff, and we'll say, hey, do you want to donate a dollar? Those dollars go different places. With Boxcar Kids, we're going to be able to keep that money and keep those fundraising and all the food that we raise, all the money that we raise, and keep it here, with the local kids that need it out here, rather than donating off somewhere else where we don't see where that goes. We'll be able to see the immediate impact of it here in the community. We also want to develop internships for students around the Antelope Valley. Working with the education system out here, we think that we could provide an ample opportunity to help students assist the venue in management operations and venue management, and give them an opportunity to learn networking skills, management skills, as well as how to communicate inside the music industry, running different shows, running stage, lighting, such. We reached a compromise in those meetings. It wasn't easy meetings, and we didn't want them to be easy meetings. If we didn't have everything out on the table with them, then there's no way we'd have touched on everything. So, we're excited how those all ended up. We get down, we said what we thought, they said what they thought, and we came to a compromise in the middle. That's the basis of compromise. We want to avoid confrontation by discussing the conditional use permit. That's what we did. Pastor Marsh proved to be diplomatic, professional, and understanding. He has family in the music industry, and so he understands the importance of a venue as a hub of the community to build local artists and build a name for the Antelope Valley and its music industry. We haven't had a venue such as this, been proposed this way ever before. So there's no precedent to this, and it's exciting to see it happen if it did. We want to maintain the church's ability to function uninterrupted. So as I said, those regularly scheduled meetings are going to be the most important thing to do. We communicated with the church, but we also communicated with our audience. As you had mentioned before, it did get sort of controversial. This was an issue that was misinterpreted by certain channels of media and certain public audience everywhere, and industry theater set out, right after that had happened, to try to correct that. So, we had open house meetings several times at industry theater for the public to come in, ask any questions, and find out what we were doing there, what the conditional use permit was, and what we wanted to do with it. We had both dissenting opinions and opinions that agreed with us. And some of the dissenting opinions that had come in to ask those questions and how to address those concerns, we were able to tell them what we thought, what everything was about, how it was being fabricated by a certain outlets of media into this sort of like a church and venue thing. We didn't want it to become that. And we were able to call that, educate, and let them know, set them straight on what was actually going on. We were here to open a venue. We weren't there to condemn a church, and that was the original thought from some of the public after seeing the initial hearings. We also discussed inside as a staff with industry theater. We communicated with each other. And what Tully did was put together a very experienced team that you could be competent in approving this waiver. Tim Cottage, who's here tonight, is, he works with KFI. He's a radio employee there, he's got much experience in the media world. He's also a former venue operator, and he's an experienced musician. We also have Jet Bookout, who's got over a decade of music experience in the Antelope Valley, and he's a giant network of musicians and bands and other people in the industry, and myself. I'm a dual degree graduate from Cal State Bakersfield. I hold a bachelor's degree in English and a bachelor's degree in communications. I was on the dean's list every quarter. I was also a member of Lambda Pi Ada, the National Communications Honor Society. I was the chapter vice president of the PRSSA at that school, and I also sing for one of those bands, that everyone is so worried about at the last hearing. That band has over a thousand followers on its different web channels, and has been played on the radio consistently in Middleton in England, and also different local areas as well. And then, on top of that staff, we also have several volunteers, many of which are here tonight, to see how everything turns out. So by balancing a sort of transparency with the public and also providing the NLCC with regular access in different lines of communication with industry theater, we think that granted the opportunity, we'll be able to successfully function as a brand in the Lancaster community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. There may be some questions. Do any members have any questions? All right, thank you for your comments. Other, evening, Mr. Rodeo.
How are you doing?
Welcome.
I'll be really quick. I was actually at the November 14th meeting, and after that meeting, virtually every issue was resolved, and the church expressed their content with the solutions that were, came up. It was a real give and take. I do take my hat off to the church. In fact, a couple of concerns that they raised actually helped addressing issues that may have affected other tenants in the buildings, as far as where they would queue up and things like that. So they're very, very good meetings. I also had previously said that the lease had controls, where I'm going to be watching this like a hawk myself. I did modify the lease, and it has been signed, I believe. I gave a copy to Sylvia for you guys, that basically says, there's no raves, things like that, and it would terminate the lease if they do occur. So I also put another level of controls on this. One thing that's happened the last month, I've got to meet a lot more people that are interested in this event, a lot more of the people that are working it, a lot more of the people from the bands, and it is a really good group of people. And they're old, they're young. Remember over there, people just walk in the street and want to know when they can start. So it's been a very positive, positive time since the last commission meeting. So I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Rodeo. Any other speakers on behalf of the applicant? No? All right then, thank you. And as the last speaker mentioned, we are in receipt of certain correspondence, just for a matter of the record, there is a, would appear to be a modification of the lease agreement executed by the landlord and Mr. Huffaker, and a guarantor. There's also a piece of correspondence from a Sarah Giehler, is it? G-I-E-H-L-E-R? Did I say that right? And there's, oh, and also another correspondence from Lorraine Gollum. And for the record, we are in receipt of correspondence at our last hearing, and that record of hearing and the testimony is recalled by the members. So we've reviewed the minutes of that meeting, and those of us that prefer actually watch the videos, so, anyway. So now is the time for those folks who have filled out a speaker card in favor of this application to address the commission. And Mr. Ludeke, do we have speakers in favor?
Yes, we have, we have several, Mr. Chairman. Cody Yost.
Mr. Yost, good evening and welcome.
I'm sorry, I'm very tall. Well, I'd like to start by saying good evening and thank you for your time. Well, as you said, my name is Cody Yost, and I'm, I've been a drummer for my band, Order 66, for the past year, and I've been a part of the music and the music community out here in the AV for the past five years. And within that time, I have experienced love and compassion and friendship that will last me for the rest of my life, and I have done this completely sober. And I am here in support of the industry theater because of the opportunities that it brings to the art community. In the Antelope Valley, as we see, as we all know, it is very tough economically right now, and very few of my friends have a constant source of income, and even the ones that do have, have like a source of revenue, have a lot of trouble with it. And this actually, a venue like this creates an opportunity for a band and musicians to fund their own hobbies through good business decisions and, man, such as where they play and what merchandise they sell. And above tickets and t-shirts, the thing any band sells more than anything else is entertainment, and I urge everyone, I urge everyone to understand what alcohol is popular for in the first place. It shaves off the nerves and allows someone to simply enjoy the moment. And in a controlled, in a controlled environment the industry theater provides, that's all it will be. And the better time the audience has, the better chance the band has to profit. And on the same note, a band can be a great vehicle for the community it resides in. Order 66, my band, with the help from the music community in the Antelope Valley, has helped raise funds for charities such as the Red Cross and the Japan Tsunami Relief Fund, the gay, lesbian, bisexual, and transgender communities, Antelope Valley Colleges, Marauders Music, and even the Cedar Center in downtown Lancaster. The industry theater creates better opportunities for charitable causes within the AV, and keeping the doors to the industry theater closed would be choking the new opportunities of charitable causes to our own community. The industry theater and the music community behind it only wish to breathe new life into the valley we share, and as places, as places to play get closed down and thrown out, we will begin to see the life and color from this valley die. Not because there is no one with a song in their heart, but because no one will let them sing. Ah, all right.
You have 30, you have 30 more seconds.
Oh, okay. But because no one will let them sing, in the mission statement for the city of Lancaster, it states, "Vision, creativity, and innovation are the necessary elements needed in delivering effective service for the citizens of Lancaster, and by refusing Tully Huffaker, you will not only crush one man's vision, but silence the creativity of the music community as a whole." Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The 30-second warning is a little disturbing, certainly, if you're not ready for it, so. You were, you were the first victim. Do we have another speaker, Mr. Ludeke?
Yes, Megan- Yes, Megan Lemos.
Is it Ramos or Lemos? Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Chairman Vos, Commissioners. My name is Megan Lemos. I founded Boxcar Kids, the charitable organization mentioned by Mr. Torresney. As he said, our goal is to collect and distribute food, clothing and toys to the underprivileged children of the Antelope Valley. A beer and wine license is not an invitation for abuse and crime. It means revenue. Revenue means continued support of our organization, which in turn means grateful children thankful for a hot meal, a warm coat or an unexpected toy at Christmas. Granting Mr. Huffaker his beer and wine license and allowing him to operate is not only a boon for the music lovers of the Antelope Valley, but for the disadvantaged youth just trying to get by. Thank you so much for your time and again, good evening.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have another speaker, Ms. Liddicki?
Marcus Roman.
Good evening. Hello, my name is Marcus Roman and I'm speaking on behalf of the Industry Theater. I believe this venue opening up is one of the greatest things that I've come across Antelope Valley for the music scene. Moving off to the top of any alcohol being sold at the venue, I completely understand the concerns that have come up. However, I just turned 21 and I have been going to live entertainment shows that serve alcohol since I was of a younger age. In my experiences for these years, I have never encountered a problem with alcohol being sold at any of these venues. We need this venue, if anything, for source of controlled alcohol being served. Now, what I mean by that is since venues like the Cedar Center, Vets Hall and Mango Tango have shut down, the only source for live entertainment music has been switched over to house shows. At these house shows, there's no control over alcohol, drugs and threats at these events. If we're worried about the kids in the Antelope Valley, I believe the Industry Theater should be welcomed to the community with open arms. In summary, the, the amount of security and also the closed off alcohol section at the Industry Theater should not pose a threat. I've, I've always had a more secure feeling at all the shows that serve alcohol because of the amount of security and the general safety for the venue's occupants. I believe the Industry Theater can provide the same feeling that I had when I was younger going to shows, which is being in a secure location, listening to music and having a good time. I believe everyone will do their part to stay on the right track and create a safe environment, not only at the Industry Theater, but also for our surrounding neighbors. Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have another speaker, Mr. Liddicki?
Kristen Boat.
Evening, Ms. Boat and welcome.
Good evening.
Did we say that right?
Bot.
Bot.
Yeah, it's common.
Sorry.
Everyone does it that way. It's okay. My name is Kristen Bot. I'm 24 years old and I've lived in Lancaster since I was six years old. I've graduated from Antelope Valley College. I have my associate's degree and I'm planning to apply to California Institute of the Arts for their Fall 2012 Character Animation Program. As an artist, I feel a kinship with musicians out here. Musicians are artists too, by different medium. Every artist needs a safe and supportive environment to gather, to relax and share. The more venues we have, the better. Visual artists have the AVC Art Gallery, Cedar Art Gallery and Lake LA School Gallery. Musicians have the Cedar Center, but otherwise they have sadly few opportunities to exhibit their talent and energy. Several of the local musicians, who are good friends of mine, have labored to help bring the Industry Theater to fruition. Through them, I became aware of New Life Community Church's concerns with alcohol. And tonight, I'm here to support the effort behind the Industry Theater because I trust Mr. Huffaker to uphold his responsibility to the community. I believe he will conduct alcohol sales in a safe, appropriate and legal manner as he promised to the Commissioners. He deserves a chance to open his business and the community deserves a healthy and law-abiding environment where both youth and adults can come and enjoy what our local musicians have to offer. Local businesses need the city's support as well if they're going to thrive. But most of all, local music needs your help. Musicians throughout the entire Antelope Valley, as well as out of town musicians who want to come and perform, would thank the Commission for a new opportunity to share their craft. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Boat. Appreciate your comments. Another speaker, Mr. Liddicki?
Jed Bookout? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Jed Bookout, welcome.
Good evening, Commissioners. Good evening, Chairman. I'm Jed Bookout. I'm actually in charge of the booking for Boxcar Productions over at the Industry Theater. I'm also a musician and I've been a musician for, like Brian mentioned, the past 10 years or so. Now, I've played events and I've been to events before that have, for lack of a better word, not exactly been very contained well. At these particular shows, security wasn't, there was, was non-existent. If there was alcohol, nobody was there to prevent underage kids from drinking. Fights were started, things like that, of that nature. However, the thing that Tully is proposing essentially, he has, sorry, I was kind of choked up for a second. But basically what he's proposing is having just a fully secured event at every possible event that we have. We're throwing shows once a week and twice a weekend. And at these shows, we will have security. We will have people watching each of the doors of the, of the lounge that we'll be serving alcohol in. We'll have people out front making sure that nobody's drinking in the parking lot or causing anything. All in all, it's just going to be a safe, fun thing for people just to prevent something like Marcus said, house shows, which are a big problem right now. I mean, if we have a venue that everybody can safely have fun at, I, I think that that's honestly worth having the venue open for. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Another speaker.
Timothy Cottage.
Mr. Cottage, good evening and welcome.
Thank you, thank you. My name is Timothy Cottage. I've been working with Mr. Huffaker for the past month or so, month and a half. He really got me involved after I saw the last planning commission meeting and we all got together and decided that, you know, not only did we have to kind of paint kind of a different picture for the rest of the city about the kind of people that are coming through, but he also had a lot of work to do over there before anything would happen. I currently work for KFI AM 640 down in Burbank. It's the largest conservative talk radio station in Southern California. We spend a lot of time doing a lot of charitable events. Just this past weekend, actually re-raised almost $150,000 for kids living in motels in Southern California. And these are the things that we want to team up with Boxcar Kids to do, as well as any other charities, mostly local. We want to stay less from Southern California, all the cities. We want to bring things locally here. As far as my history as a musician in this town, as soon as I could pick up a guitar and play shows, I was out there hitting the road. You know, we, we played shows all over the place in this town. We played at the Bamboo Lounge, which was terrifying because that place was a mess. I also worked at the Fantasy Hall with the guy that opened the place up and that was also even more of a mess than any of us could have ever imagined. But what that place did was it gave a chance for these kids to do something after school. A lot of them had problems at home, a lot of them had problems at school. They didn't want to do after work or after school programs. Not all kids are good at sports and a lot of kids that are bad at sports are really good at music. So this place gave them, you know, somewhere to come and hang out. A lot of times we held the doors open all the time just so kids could come, sit down, play guitar, talk with each other. I need to paint a picture for you guys of the musicians in this town that aren't a bunch of drunken ne'er-do-wells, I guess you could say. I really want to, I really want to express my opinion for this, for the Industry Theater opening up with the approval of the beer and wine permits. Because it's always nice to have a quick beer before you go on stage. I didn't have a beer tonight, so I'm stumbling all over the place, just so you know. Anyways, thank you so much for your time. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Do we have another speaker?
Graham Fletcher.
Hey, Mr. Fletcher and welcome.
As far back as I can remember, I've always loved music. I'm currently the lead vocalist for the local hard rock band Order 66 and I've been a part of the local music scene for over a year now. I'm going to explain why I believe it is important that we have a concert venue for not just local, but for out of town bands as well. Because in my opinion, I feel that the local music scene also represents the town that is being held in itself. As much fun as it can be playing bars and nightclubs sometimes, it doesn't put bands in a good environment for their fans. In the last board meeting footage I watched, there was a lady who named some bars, which she, I guess, looked up for bands to play. The problem with that is all the bars that she named were also 21 and up or they were shut down. Another factor of these places that they also had very low security and they presented unsafe environment for the concert goers. One incident which occurred between my good friend and drummer Cody Yost was located in a bar in Lake Hughes called The Rock Inn. A man was getting into a physical altercation with a lady after having way too much to drink. Defending the lady's honor, my friend and drummer stepped in and tried to stop it. After he tried, he had one of his front teeth knocking out and received an episode of Judge Judy out of it. All this could have been prevented if there was standard security measures at this bar, which there will be at the Industry Theater. Yes, this new venue wants to serve beer and wine and I've seen the room which they are planning on serving it in. And honestly, I would be amazed if someone could manage to sneak a beer out of there. Like, it's that tiny. In conclusion, I feel you should approve of this motion and help keep this place open because I would much have rather have kids go to a show with a safe environment where they can enjoy themselves and have fun than go to an unsafe environment with unsafe conditions. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have another speaker, Mr. Liddicki?
Lorraine Gollum.
Take your time, Ms. Gollum. We're in no hurry. Good evening, Ms. Gollum, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Vos and the Commission. I'm just thrilled listening to these young adults speak, tell you their abilities, their experience and their, you could hear their dedication. I had prepared an entirely different talk, but I am just overwhelmed and thrilled that this Antelope Valley has produced the quality of young people who are appearing here tonight. So all sizes, shapes, backgrounds. I do want to let you know and assure you that Tully Huffaker has core values, the core values that all of us hope that we teach and nurture our children. Both his parents graduated from California Institute of the Arts. He himself has been raised in our home for the arts and music. His brother and sister-in-law are teaching in Kuwait. They are high, his brother is a high school teacher who was asked to please go to Kuwait and teach English and to present on behalf of the United States government, the quality of a young man and his wife, who's also a teacher, to present themselves to teach in Kuwait. That's where they are now, except they're on vacation in Dubai. His cousins all are educated. His cousins have all various forms of jobs where they instruct, teach. His aunt has a PhD in wellness and health and is now an instructor at LSU. Her husband is a full professor and chair of the agricultural crops of LSU. I'm giving you this background so that you know that Tully did not come from a street gang. He did not come from the street. He has come from a home that believes in education, that believes in expression, and I am so fortunate to see that his friends have similar attitude and approach. And I really hope that you do not disappoint these young people, that you give them the opportunity to have the venue of their choice. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gollum. Do we have another speaker, Mr. Liddicki?
Joan Gollum.
Evening, Ms. Gollum.
Good evening. I'm Joan Gollum and I am the mother of Tully Huffaker. And I had a different speech too, but I'm just overwhelmed also with, with the support that he's receiving. But I'll just say that kids have a need, people have a need to congregate and socialize and enjoy common activities. And art, music and dance is an expression that's essential to the growth of the human spirit. This venue will provide a supervised and secure arena for these shared activities. And I'd like to interject here that maybe nobody was more worried about security than me, being the mother of Tully. But I've been convinced that his venue is a positive and genuine and really energetic place. Without a place to go, the kids will do what they've always been doing and that's going out into the desert and drinking with abandon and using drugs because they still want to congregate. I was not, I was a bartender at one time and I'd like to just say that a bartender that's trained and responsible knows not to over-serve because there are legal consequences and there are moral consequences. And so I don't think that that's going to be a problem. I think that the venue will be, is a much-needed and very positive addition or potential addition for the Antelope Valley. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Gollum. Another speaker, Mr. Liddicki?
Yvonne Barton.
Evening, Ms. Barton and welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm happy to be back here. I have credentials here. Let's see, I was, when I met Tully Huffaker, he was two months old and he did not know how famous I was at the time. I was president of the Yano Community Association and we were in the process of trying to get the Little Rock High School put where it is. So I have that credential coming. I also got my Yano Community Association Person of the Year award. And then we went into the, so I understand, working with a group of people to get something done. And then we started our Friends of the Foothills. I don't know, that was a while ago, to keep Battle Rock out of the foothills, the quarries, the quarries out of crystal air, if you will. Okay. So I've known Tully since he was two months old. He was always adventurous and a trendsetter. He's intelligent, clever and calculating. And you don't need to tell me the incidences in which we found all those traits out. But I wanted to say that I, my boys grew up with Tully and Ian and they all became musicians. My boys went off to the Victor Valley area to use their venues there as their bus driver. I saw a lot of bands in and out of these places that I thought were very reckless. But, you know, 18 to 25, 18 is a very, it's a very difficult year, 18 to 21. So we pursued it. My boys went off to college, but their kids continued into this musical venue thing. And we've been all the way over to San Francisco to watch their friends play on these stages. The last one was Bottom of the Hill and even when I walked in, they carded me. And I love that. I thought that was really precious. And they put a band on me and everybody that walked in that wasn't 21 got these big black X's on their hands. And I thought, that's not coming off for a long time. So I think that these venues are, are good, they're great. I like going to them. I say sell earplugs because I saw 25-year-olds with earplugs on. But I wear earplugs and I like to go and I like to jump up and down once in a while. So it's not just for the 18 to 25-year-olds. Sometimes 56-year-olds like to get out there and swing it a little too. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have any other speakers, Mr. Liddicki?
I have no other cards, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have, we have no speakers in opposition?
I have no cards, but you can poll the audience if you wish.
Well, everyone's had an opportunity to fill out a speaker's card. Anybody has a, have a compelling reason to fill out a speaker's card and address us, you're more than welcome. If not, we will call on Mr. Huffaker if he'd care to offer closing remarks. You're not obliged to, but you certainly can if you wish.
I'll go for it. Well, we've, we've worked very hard to appease the church and we've worked hard to come up with a compromise and we've worked hard with the community to find people to help us and get together and we've, we've organized ourselves and we've met with the church and we've met with locals and all in all, I think that we have worked out a system that will not conflict with any surrounding businesses. I think it'll be the best for the, the area. I think it'll be good for Lancaster. It'll bring in money, it will bring in entertainment. And I think that as long as we have found a way so the New Life Community Church is not affected by our presence, then all will be for the best. And I think it'll be a really great thing if we get approved for, for everybody involved. And that's my closing statement.
All right. Thank you. We will have a question or two for you, I'm sure. Anyone care to offer any-
I- I have a question about the six-month review. Were you aware of that?
Um, we were aware there'd be a review after six months of some sort.
How- how do you feel about that?
Um, well, we're prepared to do whatever it takes to make everybody happy, so if that's what we have to do, we'll do it.
Is there a process for handling complaints or a way that you're gonna have that dialogue instead of making the complaint official, it goes to you first?
Yeah, well, we have tried to set up dialogue with the church so that if they have any complaints, they can address them with us directly, and then we will resolve them the best we can. So ideally, we will be able to resolve any problems in-house, uh, prior to any hearings involving the city.
Was the artwork in the alcohol area and in the main venue area your idea, the painting, and then the idea for the wall art?
Yeah, that's- that's my art.
That's very interesting.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? It begs the question that you have reviewed and consent to all the proposed conditions of approval, both in Resolution eleven dash eighteen, which is the staff's recommendation, uh, to approve the conditional use permit with the alcohol beverage sales of beer and wine, right?
Yep.
You've- you've reviewed those and you would accept those?
Sure, we're- we're happy to do whatever it takes, so everyone's happy.
Okay. And secondly, uh, there is an alternate Resolution eleven dash twenty-two, which is a resolution with all- without, um, it's to approve the conditional use permit, uh, however, it excludes the sale of alcoholic beverages. And- and if that's adopted, you'd agree to those conditions as well?
Well, I- I- I was under the impression that the conditions we arranged upon were for the approval of the beer and wine sales.
So, you haven't reviewed, uh, the proposed Resolution eleven dash twenty-two without alcohol- alcoholic beverage sales?
Um, I haven't- I haven't received anything, uh, going over that.
I- I- speak up and say that again?
I'm sorry. Um, I- we have not received any, uh, any notices of that part of the resolution. I was unaware.
Just hold right there, would you please? Mr. Lutowski was- was, since we have two resolutions in our packet, with and without the sale of alcoholic beverages, which was the request of the Commission at last meeting to be in a position to bifurcate it if in- if in fact that was the Commission's choice, that hadn't been shared with the applicant?
Uh, the fact that the Commission had asked for a resolution that would basically approve the use without alcohol was shared with the- with the applicant. The- the only difference actually between the conditions is that any of the conditions that specifically addressed alcohol obviously are not included in that. Any of the conditions that refer to the operation of the use in terms of security, um, size of events, times, days are identical.
But I understand from the- from the applicant's testimony, he hasn't really reviewed it other than what-
No, apparently he has not specifically reviewed those.
Um, since I don't know what the pleasure of the Commission is gonna be, I'd suggest we take a- a break then, since we have no further testimony, and- and leave the public hearing open. And, uh, maybe you and Mr. Huffaker could sit down for a few minutes and review that so he can then answer the question if, in fact, that was the pleasure of the Commission, would he accept those conditions? Because we need to know that.
Yeah, I- I have a pretty good understanding of the conditions, and if it's-
I- I don't want you to make a commitment to something you haven't read, all right?
No, I- I understand that, and I also understand, um, I have reviewed the- the conditions several times, and if the re- the ones that would be removed would be specifically directed towards alcohol, I understand what those would be, and I- we would accept.
So, you're comfortable with that? I'll put you, I, you know, five more minutes, ten more minutes, no big deal. You're- you're satis- you're satisfied? You want to take a break and review it and look at it, please? Thank you. Appreciate you doing that. So, we're gonna take a ten-minute recess, and Mr. Huffaker will have an opportunity to review that and ask the staff of any questions he likes. Thank you. All right. We're back in session. Um, from our short recess, Mr. Huffaker, if you wouldn't mind coming back to the podium? And you've had an opportunity to review the alternate, uh, resolution for content, I should say.
Yes. Yes, we reviewed it.
I can't assume how this Commission will vote, uh, what motion will be offered, but we have two potential motions in front of us. I just want to make sure you've read the conditions and understand what they are.
Okay. Great. Yeah, we- we- we've reviewed these. Um, we- we truly need the alcohol to become a viable business. We have reviewed these conditions. Several of the conditions were drafted under the impression that we were trying to compromise with the church so that we could serve alcohol. So, provided eleven twenty-two is, um, passed, then we would like the opportunity to amend a couple of the conditions, including hours of operations and security requirements. Um, other than that, we- 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 we set up our- our- our income, you know, when we were wondering what we would get. It was all depending on if we're not open on Wednesdays and Sundays, that's because we're serving alcohol. If we have five security guards, that's because we're serving alcohol. If we do not get alcohol, we will need to amend a couple of things just to make it so that we could stay in business for a reasonable amount of time.
All right. So, for the record, you've had an opportunity to review all the conditions of the proposed resolutions, and you understand them?
Yes.
And if they are imposed, you're- you'll be obliged to abide by them, assuming we don't modify them?
Yes.
Okay. That's for the record. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments of Mr. Huffaker before we let you sit down? Thank you. that considering all the testimony this evening and the previous hearing that where the members and interested folks testified, a large number of folks from the New Life Community Church spoke in opposition to this application. It is written in the staff report that the pastor of the New Life Community Church, Pastor Marsh, it was not opposed to project after meeting with the applicant and staff working through these conditions. That is correct, right?
Yes, that was staff's impression from the meeting.
Okay. And since we've heard no testimony contradicting that, then I'm satisfied then that our suggestion and recommendation last month, where folks have an opportunity to sit down and try to work through differences and understand one another's position, is actually worthwhile. So I think folks learned a lot this evening, or last week, and through the process. And it's not unusual for this commission to do what we did last month as well, asking folks to sit down and work through and try to understand and work through their issues. At any rate, it's appropriate to consider a motion on this and whatever your pleasure is. Commissioner Elliott, you broke your microphone, my goodness. Do you think it works?
It works.
It works?
It works.
Okay. Can't leave you folks loose for one minute, my goodness. So, what's your pleasure, folks? What would you like to do?
Commissioner Vos, I'd like to move that we adopt Resolution Number 11-18, approving conditional use permit Number 11-10.
I second that motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment from anyone? Please vote. Motion passes 5-0. The conditional use permit is approved. Next item is a new public hearing. The new public hearing is conditional use permit Number 11-12, which is an application by Living Word Worship Center for conditional use permit to allow a church in an existing building, in the same neighborhood, actually. So without objection, the public hearing is open on this matter. And for the record, we have received an uncontested letter signed by Senior Pastor Hightower indicating they would agree to all the conditions as proposed in conditional use permit 11-12. So would the commission care to hear a staff report on this item? Anyone? Anyone? No one has a compelling reason to hear a staff report, and since we have an uncontested letter, do we have any speakers on this matter, Mr. Ludiki?
I have no cards, Mr. Chairman.
All right, then. It would be appropriate to close the public hearing without objection and consider a motion on this matter.
I move that we adopt Resolution Number 11-19, approving conditional use permit Number 11-12.
Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Please vote. Thank you. All right, then. The next item is a new public hearing on tentative tract map Number 70861. Commissioner Harvey?
Yes, Chairman Vos. As the Director of the Lancaster Redevelopment Agency, I find it appropriate that I recuse myself from the discussion vote on this agenda item.
All right, thank you. So for the record, Commissioner Harvey has recused herself and has left the dais. So that leaves four of us, and we still have a quorum. So we do not have a letter on this matter. Do we have any speakers on this one?
No, I do have a representative from the city's redevelopment agency present, however, if you have any questions.
All right, thank you. Does anyone here care to hear a staff report on this? Doesn't sound like it. All right, then. It would be appropriate to close the public hearing without objection and consider a motion on this matter.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 1120, approving tentative tract map Number 70861.
Thank you.
I second that motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Please vote.
Motion passes 4-0.
Yeah, with Commissioner Harvey recusing herself.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Welcome back. All right. And under new business. Well, this is not a public hearing. However, we will consider testimony on an amendment to the Lancaster Municipal Code, Chapter 5.26, Vehicles For Hire. The applicant is the Planning Department of the City of Lancaster. Mr. Ludiki, would you give us a brief staff report?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, very briefly. This ordinance, if adopted ultimately by the city council, would establish regulations and allowances for certain types of vehicles for hire. And without limiting any other possibilities, I would tell you, they are designed to really permit rickshaws and pedicab-type vehicles within the city. The regulations would establish allowable locations that those could operate. Primarily, those relate to either the speed of the street or the presence of certain types of bike lane facilities. And you have been requested specifically to make a determination, not only on the appropriateness of the ordinance, but whether or not the downtown Lancaster area, including the Boulevard itself, would be an appropriate location for such vehicles to operate. Staff has given you a variety of facts and figures regarding pedicab operations specifically, including other types of cities where they operate and the types of regulations that they may be subject to. And in summary, we believe that it's a good ordinance for the city to consider on a whole, and we think specifically, given the configuration of downtown Lancaster, that the street and traffic patterns would in fact allow these to blend in fairly easily, and would in fact, I think, bring some additional benefit to that area. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. This is not a typical type of thing for the commission to review because it doesn't specifically involve land use. However, because you are the council's commission, and they can ask you to review what they would like you to review, this is something they have asked you to take a look at.
Thank you, Mr. Ludiki. We feel privileged to have Mr. Neal here tonight and to represent the Public Works Department of our fair city, and, you know, it would compel me to ask some questions in that regard, just so you don't feel like you wasted your time here tonight, Mr. Neal. At any rate, we, the commission, as everyone knows, hopefully, we meet a week in advance of these public meetings, which is also a public meeting, and discuss with staff, and staff presents our agenda to us and in great detail. A lot of our questions are asked at that time and are responded to. One of the things that the commission was concerned about at the last meeting had to do with whether or not these pedicabs would be operated on the sidewalks, particularly in the Boulevard area, where it would seem to be inappropriate to have pedicabs mixing with pedestrians because of the width of the sidewalk and the various restaurant venues with sidewalk dining and that type of thing. So at any rate, that was a concern I had. It was cleared up. And the other modification that was discussed was giving the city manager the opportunity to limit the number of pedicabs within the community. And that was modified as well.
Yes, that language is incorporated into the draft.
Right, okay. And we did have some discussion, as I recall, about the width of the street and the loading and unloading of passengers and that type of thing, and how that might or might not work. So this ordinance that creates a licensing process then, and rules of the road, if you will, then limits the ability of a pedicab operator from loading and unloading passengers in the public right-of-way, where the street width is too narrow for the safe transition of automobiles and pedicabs. Would that be about right?
Yes, that's a correct statement. And I think in our discussion, we noted the kind of the one central section of the Boulevard where there is tightness in terms of the traffic lanes, designed obviously to slow traffic down, as well as provide some outdoor dining venue space and so forth. In those particular areas, particularly, I would think on the westbound side of Lancaster Boulevard, it may not be possible for a pedicab to actually pull off in that area to load or unload somebody unless there happens to be an open space on the Romulus available. On the eastbound side, they do have the opportunity, although I don't know quite how the parking may be at a certain time, they would have that opportunity to take FIG perhaps and unload at that point. But basically, that would be the one section of the Boulevard where, unlike some other areas where there is more opportunity, that they may not have as much chance to stop and load or unload.
But the whole intent is that these vehicles, pedicab vehicles, similar to two-wheel bicycles or three-wheel bicycles or whatever they may be, will be sharing the right-of-way with automobiles.
Correct.
And will have to operate under all the rules and regulations promulgated by traffic safety and so forth.
Yes.
Great.
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
On the pedicab itself, it said it could be 21 speeds, so it's all human-powered. And I know from our discussion, there's a possibility of an electric assist. But cars have electric assist now, and they call them hybrids, so they're gasoline-electric. So we're not going to have any gasoline. It's all going to be human and possibly electric assist.
Yes, the intent is not to allow a motorized-type vehicle in the sense of gasoline engine and things of that type. I think, but thank you for pointing that out. For anyone who may be listening, this ordinance specifically does not address the issue of horse-drawn carriages. They are not permitted by this ordinance, nor taxis or any other kinds of vehicles that are already regulated by other city regulations.
One last question on the number of pedicabs. Is it going to be limited to an area? How many or market forces or?
It isn't specific at this point. I think the intent from the city's standpoint would be that if they become either a hindrance to traffic flow, a safety factor for pedestrians, or, as has been the case in San Francisco, where you start getting perhaps competition and fights between pedicab operators, that may be an indication that you need to deal with it. The city's interest is really more on the issue of public health and safety as opposed to trying to determine competitiveness or anything else.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anything, any other comments or questions from members? We have no speakers' cards on this?
We have no cards, and I received no public comment otherwise, letters or emails.
All right. Okay, so since no one else has anything to offer, and we have no further public, or no public testimony on this, and it seems our questions have been satisfactorily addressed in the proposed ordinance, it would be appropriate to close the public hearing and consider a motion on this matter.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 11-21, recommending to the city council adoption of proposed Chapter 5.26 of the Lancaster Municipal Code, and further recommending that the specific operation of pedicabs in downtown Lancaster is appropriate.
Thank you.
I second.
Thank you. All right, then. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Motion passes 5-0, and it will be scheduled for the council at some subsequent date.
All right, thank you. Just a matter of interest, the horse-drawn vehicle licensing never moved forward. I don't know if you noticed the other evening, the operation of a horse-drawn vehicle in our fair city?
Yes.
You did notice that?
Yes, and I asked about that.
Thursday evening, wasn't it?
Pardon?
Was it Thursday evening?
Uh, may have been. Horse-drawn vehicles are legal vehicles on any public roadway, provided they have proper markings and so forth. What the ordinance, or what they're prohibited from doing at this point is charging fare, which apparently does not prohibit them from taking donations. They just cannot charge a fare.
I see.
As it was explained to me.
I see. Okay, thanks for the clarification. And that leads us to Director's announcements. Do you have any announcements, Mr. Ludiki?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and I do. Unfortunately, she is not here this evening. Sylvia Donovan, our principal planner, I think most of you are aware, but in case you are not, she is retiring at the end of this year. And we are going to miss her. I thought I would take this opportunity at this meeting to state that, because I don't quite know if we're going to actually have a December meeting, given the case distribution as it is. But I would tell you that even as she's now in her last couple of months of being here, what you saw this evening with this industry theater, she was a very instrumental part of that. She was the staff member who attended the two meetings as the city's representative. She spent a great deal of time speaking, not only with the applicant, but with representatives of the church, trying to explain to them the process that the commission goes through, the issues that the commission has, why it's important that they address this or that situation. And that kind of experience and skill, you just don't find very easily. And I think the city will be a little bit poorer in that regard for her departure, but she has a number of things she would like to do with her free time. So Sylvia, I know you're not here, but if you're listening, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ludiki. Anyone care to add anything?
Sylvia sure left her mark on the city. From when the Architectural Design Commission, she showed us how she was instrumental in getting the she showed us how she was instrumental in getting the design of the one and only Walmart that looks like that in the country to look that way. So she was very moving in different areas and very much hands-on. And I even walked with her when we did the Walk Lancaster survey. So she was, yeah, she'll be missed.
No question. An asset, and in my private practice, in all the years working with the city, it's been certainly my pleasure to work with Sylvia. And I won't, I don't know that I can say exactly how long that's been, but a substantial amount of time that we worked together. And always a professional, certainly always a professional, and always had her temper under control. I don't know that she has a temper, but I suppose she probably does. But she certainly never expressed that across the counter or across the table in contentious situations with applicants and developers and clients that I represented. So, but I certainly appreciate all the years working with her and her professionalism, certainly. And she will be missed. And we do thank her for her service. All right. Any other announcements, Mr. Luticki?
I mentioned to you that it's very likely you will not have items for a regular meeting in December, but we'll determine that in the next couple of weeks here.
All right.
And I would-
So it would be appropriate, when we do adjourn to our regular meeting on December 12th, and if in fact there's not an agenda, then it would be appropriately posted?
Yes, we will go through the proper steps if necessary on that. A reminder, however, that for January, you will have a meeting that's a week later. That's what the determination was that you made. And you are in all likelihood going to have at that meeting in front of you the draft master plan of trails and bikeways with any recommendations that have come out of the Architectural and Design Planning Commission, who are currently conducting their public process on that. In fact, their next meeting is in fact tomorrow evening in these chambers.
All right. So our January staff meeting would be January 9?
Yes.
And the public meeting would be a week, two weeks later, the 23rd of January, because of the holiday on the 16th?
That's correct.
And I think we did mention at our staff meeting is that we would probably have a study session on January 9, starting at 4:30, to continue with the discussion of sign regulation?
Yes, I believe that was the consensus of the group.
At that time. So depending on what the status of the December agenda would be, if in fact that meeting is canceled, then it would be appropriate to post the special meeting of January 9?
Yes.
As the next regular meeting of the commission, as a special meeting, which is open to the public. However, it's held in the conference room, right?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Anything from the commission? Anyone? All right. So it's time for public business from the floor. This portion of the agenda allows an individual the opportunity to address the commission on any subject regarding city business. Under state legislation, no action can be taken on non-agenda items. Members of the public should be aware of this when addressing the commission regarding items not specifically referenced on the agenda. If you'd please complete a speaker's card for the recording secretary. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. Do we have any speakers on any non-agendized items?
I have no cards, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Then, without objection, we stand adjourned to the special meeting for agenda review on Monday, December 12, 2011, at 5:30 PM here in the planning conference room at City Hall. Thank you all, and good evening.